Next item on our agenda, statements from the public. And the first speaker appears to be Mitchell.
Looks like R.I.C.K. Rich Mitchell.
Oh, Ruth Mitchell, come on up.
I can add here if you hold me and ask me to pose a question and why I have Ruth Mitchell there and P.L.W. Exactly, right?
You have to speak for yourself, so...
I answer to myself, that was the question.
So you're allowed to ask any questions you want, whether they come from Ruth Mitchell or whoever, but it's your speaking time.
No, no, my time, I have five minutes.
You have four minutes.
Do it, hey. Let's grab the rest of time tonight.
Yes, we will, go ahead.
I'm speaking on behalf of Ruth Mitchell, and she says it's my understanding that it's the intention of the consultants to bypass the extremely important findings of a traffic report and to blatantly ignore the community concerns involving all traffic problems, letting us know the only transparency will be what they want us to know about the congested traffic patterns because they are behind schedule. They really think that the civic, if they think that civic associations permit them, will permit them to go directly to a vote on the bond issue which is slated for December, that she feels that that is something that should not happen, and that she'd like to see it reversed, to see it, that they will give that traffic analysis. And I think, Mr. Williams, you had addressed this with Ms. Mitchell previously, or you've done it too with the board. Now, I'd like to have the names of the civic associations that the board has gone to to discuss the bond issue. And I'd like to get that if Ms. Ivy Kraus has it. And I'd like to discuss the appointment of the new trustee on the board. Jeff, how are you? Welcome aboard. Now, my problem is that when this board had nine trustees on it, and eight of the trustees were white and there was only one black trustee, I had a problem. I have a problem with a board that has six black people on it and one white person. Now, when I was yelling about all white and one black person, that means that I have to also defend what I don't like about this board, what really creeps me the most. And I want to thank Lloyd Newland for recognizing the importance of diversity. And I want to tell Ms. Cora Carrier, I know that you understand what diversity means in this school district. We don't have it now. We tend to go to what is the easy way, what we're comfortable with. But this school board has to recognize that diversity means we include everybody. I'm not going to be happy with an all-black board, sorry. And I'm black all the way to Afro, and I can go back to when I was the first one that had Afro at Virginia State College. So I'm not going to be happy with this board. Now, what we can do is move this board to nine people again. And then when we come up for the next election, we can add two more people. Who's coming off in the next term? I need to know. Now, Lloyd Newland, I'm so sorry, darling, but you cannot go. You've been holding down the fort, you've been voting the right way. I'm proud of you, and we need more people like you. Now, all of the people that voted to let Ms. Rossi come in at Richard J. Bailey and that's what can...
Don't, don't go there.
Don't tell me where not to go, you're looking at the...
I'm telling you where not to go.
You're not going to tell me that.
I have to tell you that.
No, I can say what I want to say.
We've been through this process enough times that you know the rules.
I do not know. I don't know who you thought you were speaking to, you were not speaking to me.
Personnel items, remember personnel items.
Don't be ridiculous. Now, as I was saying, we have Richard J. Bailey, and at Richard J. Bailey we have what I call a person who is there, who was at one time a person who worked for this school board, and she was head of the summer school for children with needs. I don't know which kind of needs they had, but they have. There were at least three African-Americans who applied for that position. I thought it was only two, but I was told it was three. Now, since those two were more qualified than the person we hired, because that's who we knew, and I believe the superintendent...
Your time is up, finish your sentence.
No, I have not finished my sentence, and you've interrupted me three times. So I would advise you put another one there, okay? We had two qualified people, and the superintendent of the school system here said that she needed the N.A.C.P. to help her find qualified African-Americans. Now, you were there, you sat there, you made a statement because you were talking to the chairperson of education.
I think your time is up.
And those individuals that were here and actually were looking for positions and were qualified, they were ignored. Now, you didn't have to look for two qualified people, but you did not hire them.
The next speaker is Deborah Morris.
No, the next speaker is Patricia Wiens. Now...
You are Patricia Wiens. You're going to deny being Patricia Wiens now?
No, I'm laughing, I'm just laughing because you're going to tell me who I am like I don't know who I am. Keep laughing.
Our next speaker is Deborah Morris.
Now, there were two African-Americans who applied for positions. Ms. Morris is not going to come up.
Ms. Morris, do you wish to speak?
Yes, she does, but she will do so after I finish. Now, you have, and we are going to get the presentations because I want to hear what they have to say.
Do I hear a motion for a brief recess?
Please do.
Do I hear a second?
Could you please leave that camera on?
All in favor?
Say, you all can go on to recess, you all can take a break. I want to speak to the people who are on this television.
Do we have four?
No. No, no, I'm not, oh, I can't do that. You know what, I have the right, no, I have the right to protest, and that's what I'm going to do. Ms. Reverend Morris, you can have a seat, thank you.
We are in recess.
Good. Now, as I said, if the mic is on, I'm glad that it is. Now, we had an opportunity to see to it that we could integrate our school now and our high school, but we did not do that. Don't try it. Now, what I want to say is that there is one African-American teacher at Hady.
Can you get rid of the mic? Get rid of the mic. Take the mic. Go to a podium.
The meeting is reconvened.
Good evening.
Have to do it.
In reverence to Lobby Guard, we had asked if you had any data.
It's cracking.
If you had any data concerning... If you have any data, it looks like it's on, it's light on.
Get it to work.
Ivy, you may just reset the tone.
It seems to be... All right, go for it.
I'll say good evening again. I'm in reference to Lobby Guard. Are you working on the data in reference to a shoe stick when you came here?
We don't know if the TV camera will pick it up. Let's use the microphone.
In reference to Lobby Guard, are you working on the data? In reference to when you bought it, the old system versus the new system, its breakdowns, we mentioned it last week. We mentioned it at the last meeting, so hopefully, I don't know if you're working on it, but I think we should have some data in reference, how many times it has broken down, how many times it's working, and that could be ongoing. That doesn't have to be anything that's, you know, for an astronomical, but it could be just something that you could do ongoing.
I've learned that, oh, go ahead.
Go on.
I've learned that Lobby Guard does not record its own failures, so you can't get it out of the machine. I've learned that, well, we had an, we walked through R.J. Bailey and checked Lobby Guard and talked to, not the regular person who mansits most of the day, but the person who mansits in the morning, and found that it very seldom fails, but when it does fail, it takes longer than a minute to deal with the problem, and usually they call in tech support. That's what I've learned so far since we last spoke. We do have statistics on how many people have processed through Lobby Guard. I believe the superintendent provided that for us. I don't have any hard data on failures other than, you know, it's all anecdotal at this point.
Okay, well, the machine doesn't have to do it. We could also go right back to the human. You can make a data sheet, you know, whatever you need to place on it. The person who's sitting there, they could record. And that's just how it does. I mean, that's easy. But it doesn't have to be a computerized system.
Where is the information being stored?
Where is the information being stored? Yeah, and then we need to know where is the information being stored, and it should be presented to the community, especially since there's so much discussion in reference to Lobby Guard. Okay? That should not be difficult at all. And now that, I'm just going to piggyback a little, pardon? Do you keep a security log? That's the other thing, that's a very good question. But all that should be part of your data. That, when you start looking at it, you're going to say, what do we want to look at? So that's not, that's not difficult, okay? And when you did talk about diversity, I do want to know what are you doing in reference to hiring multicultural staff at the schools? I know when we spoke last time, you said you are aware about it. But what are you doing about it? And to tell me there are no candidates, I know that's totally unacceptable. And if there are no candidates, then we have to look at how we are advertising for the jobs. So if you could do that, we appreciate that as well, okay?
So with reference to, first of all, thank you for your question, good evening. With reference to your comment about the district's approach to attracting more diverse candidates, I'm just going to defer to Dr. Valente, who is in charge of curriculum instruction and personnel.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. And I want to thank the education committee of the board for working closely with my office in order to bring to the district culturally responsive teaching. That is a first step in terms of diversity. That is to say that there is training that we will have for all of the administrators of the district, and that will be followed by training for our teachers in terms of making them very understanding of the diverse needs of our students and how to best react to those needs within an educational, cultural, school environment. That is one step. The second step we're taking is drawing a wider arc in terms of attracting candidates in general to the district. We're working with Southern Westchester Voces, which is comprised of approximately thirty-seven districts. Anyone can hear me?
Let's see if we can do it just by word of mouth. Let's see without the speaker.
Go.
Just talk regular.
Yes.
As I was saying, we're working, culturally responsive teaching, I think you heard that. Our administrators will be trained later this November, and then our teachers, beginning with our seven-to-twelve faculty, that will happen in February, and then we'll follow with our elementary faculty. If we don't accomplish what we want in the first year, we can extend with Voces into a second and third year. The second program we have initiated with Southern Westchester Voces, who represent thirty-seven districts throughout the region, is that we are looking to set up an arrangement for recruiting specifically minority candidates. And they would like to work with Greenberg and some other districts in the region specifically to that purpose. A third approach that we're taking is broadening our advertising beyond OLS, which has been our traditional venue, and incorporating more of the New York Times, which is an expensive venue, may I add, but extending to the New York Times and other social media recruitment for positions within the Greenberg Central School District. We're currently recruiting for a director of special ed. Without getting too far into the weeds, because we're still in the process of screening, I think we can report at this point that we have nearly forty candidates who have applied. Many of them are people of color, administrators of color, and we are interviewing all of them in screening prior to bringing them to a screening committee. So those are some of the concrete steps that we have taken in order to attract most qualified candidates of diversity to the school district.
Is the board, I know superintendent, she does along with you a lot of the interviewing process. Are the names brought to the board?
I bring to the superintendent of schools the names of all applicants. I will be bringing to a screening committee that will be comprised not of the superintendent but of administrators and teachers throughout the district, as well as parent and in this case, septic representatives. The names of five, three-to-five semifinalists, and their job will be to interview and recommend from that list a group that will go to Dr. Chase. They have the right to ask for any names they would like. A prior committee that I chaired, the Athletic Committee, did ask for specific names and salaries of candidates, and they received that information. So it is shared with appropriate people who have signed confidentiality letters that they will not reveal confidential information about candidates, salary they earn, or other aspects of their qualifications.
It sounds very good. But what's very interesting, and I have to say this, you have workshops on diversity for the staff. You're a very diverse community, and you're talking as if there are really no blacks around. I mean, this is crazy. What you just said, I hear you, and it sounds very professional, but it really doesn't get to the core. The core is, is that there are qualified people that have come to you, and I think it's a mindset that has to be trained. And a mindset may be right here in reference to who do we want and what are we representing. And I have a funny feeling that there's a representation that is not feasible maybe to those who are interviewing for their hiring. So personally, I hear you, and when you're talking about the workshops and trying to get everybody on the same plane, something is wrong in that.
I think I hear your comments. I thank you for using the word professional. I'm trying to be as professional as you would expect me to be. I don't think I'm saying anything out of order by saying we have hired administrators at the high school most recently, some of whom who are minority, and I think you know who they are. Dean Parker is a superb dean, literally.
No names, no names.
They're working.
We're a family, we can't say names. Okay.
These are publicly appointed.
No, I thank you for that, and I'm just hoping that the mindset, even when we're hiring, we could embrace diversity.
I believe the superintendent, board, and I embrace that. That's what I'm trying to say, we do embrace that.
Okay. We'll keep an eye out for the...
I appreciate you keeping an eye. Are these mics not on? So, I was a former teacher, so I'm going to use my voice. How many people in this audience are familiar with a magazine called Black Westchester? Okay. Whenever we have a posting, we actually send it to Black Westchester. They post it on their LinkedIn as well as Facebook, and you can go to Black Westchester's LinkedIn or Facebook, or you can even ask the editors, A.J. Woodson and Damon Jones yourself, so that we're strategically recruiting various ethnicities in our school district, and we're making a conscious effort, and we will continue to do so and make a conscious effort. So just in addition to what Dr. Valente shared, I also want the public to know that we have also reached out to publications that actually target a particular audience in an attempt to reach our candidates of color. In addition, I do know that our particular principals have sent advertisements for openings to the Westchester Alliance of Black School Educators. It's WOPEC, which is an acronym for Westchester Alliance of Black School Educators, again, reaching out to a group of individuals who would be attracted to the Greenberg Central School District, and we will continue in our efforts. So I thank you for your comments.
Yes, mic is on.
Is that still on? So I got to say that all over again?
Continue to have the main cameras on. All right, we're having technical difficulties. Our next speaker is mid-hon.
But it's not being recorded? Oh, it is being recorded.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Well, mine is very brief. Sorry? Oh. It wasn't very...
Go ahead.
Yes. So mine is very brief. Overall, I would like to thank the Board of Education Trustees for an amazing opportunity that I had to go through a real rigorous process in selecting a board member to replace Vaya. It was really a wonderful experience, and I learned a lot from it, so I thank you very much. I would like to especially thank trustees Darden Centron and trustee Williams for being such stakeholders and seeing some extraordinary vision that I could have brought to the board. And each round, you were very, very clear in sticking to your vision, and I appreciate and deeply and grateful for, you know, advocating for my voice and speaking of diversity in my diverse thinking and my ability to have diverse partnerships perhaps on the board. And I thank you very much. Mr. Warner, you are a hero to my husband and my son because you broke the tie, and I am not on there, and they love you. Kristen Barnes, congratulations. You are truly deserving of where you're sitting. You look amazing, and we've talked for so many years. I don't mean that in a like a look.
So embarrassing.
I think that we've talked for so many years as parents, and I hope that you will continue to uphold our private conversations about raising our children with their peers, and that you will not waver, and you will not change your mind about advocacy that you and I have spoken about for almost six, seven years together. So congratulations.
Thank you so much, thank you. Our next speaker is Tiana Washington.
Good evening.
Teacher voice.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I first want to say congratulations to Mr. Barnes. Congratulations. You have granted board basically two times before. You're committed to the community. You're endorsing your portfolio, you have been committed to all the schools. I think that you are an asset to the Board of Education. I do congratulate the Board of Education for selecting Mr. Jeff Barnes, and I'm really hoping we can see the work together for our students, for our community. And I'm really excited about the new opportunity in reference to you being in addition. But I do like the suggestion that you made, go back to a nine-person board. How would that be possible, Mr. Warner?
You would have to put together a petition to make that happen. And the question is, would you vote on it? And if you vote on it at this election, you could then change it back over to a nine-person board the following year.
Okay, so for the 2020 or for 2019? 2019? So we have to get a petition. Okay, all right, so a petition has, all right, so we'll talk about how to do that. Something that, you know, gives everyone a little bit more perspective on the board, and we can add more diversity to the board, which would be great for our diverse students. Good evening, Dr. Valente, how are you?
Good evening, Ms. Washington. How much of the time?
How much of the time? Always, always. Dr. Valente, last time I was here, I was talking to Dr. Chase about the ALP program.
ALP, yes.
I asked how it was going, and I knew you had the data on how diverse ALP is. Do you remember how many African-Americans, how many, does it date at all? Do you have that?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, it's not all.
I don't have it in front of me, but I do have it mentally.
Oh, okay, no, all right. I remember you had said talking about twenty-five percent, but I thought it was great because it showed how diverse we are. And I asked Dr. Chase how the ALP program was going, and since this is kind of like your baby, you initiated it, can you please explain how it's going, the curriculum, how the curriculum's actually different from some of our other classes? Not that it's totally different, but how is it different?
Well, let me give a brief pressee for the community and the board, and if the board would like at the November meeting, we can make that my report since I've been asked to prepare an educational report on occasion at a public meeting. The ALP program stands for Advanced Learning Program, A.L.P., and we're encouraging students to reach for the stars, to climb high, to exceed their expectations, so that's where ALP is. It's symbolic of that notion. We began the program effective this September. We have a cohort at each grade level, grade one, two, three, four, five, and six, a cohort of approximately twenty-two to twenty-five students in each. Students were identified using objective testing nationally-based, the COGAT, STAR ELA, and STAR Math Tests. And it was those specific data that drove decisions in terms of selection of the students. Two individuals were designated to conduct the test in order to ensure validity and reliability. And I must say that the reflection of the test brought out our population and all of its diversity at each of the cohort levels. What I recall, and I'll have exact data at the meeting... 50% from a gender point of view were male, 50% were female. You couldn't have gotten that if somebody sat in the back room and laid out the names. Secondly, in terms of federal categories, African-American, Hispanic, Asian, other white. When you look at the distribution of students in the program, African-American was in the 28% range, ELA and math, science, if I recall correctly. Hispanic, again, in the 25, 28% range. Then moving to Asian, I think, was a lower percentage, as well as other, closer to the lower 20s. That should all add up to about 100%. But as I said, we'll have exact data. So I think the diversity of the program from a student point of view is in evidence. The diversity of the program from the faculty point of view, certainly at Bailey, we have diverse faculty. Manning the ELA math portion of the program. And we hired some additional staff to manage the Jackson and the Hyview component of the program. In terms of actual results, I think it's too early to say we have these results. I can say this, that parents who wanted to have a waiver of their child or ask for a second hearing or ask for an opportunity to make their case, we set up a committee, and that committee did hear each of those parents' concerns and were appropriate for addressed. I served as an appeal at a third level for parents who weren't happy at the second level, and I received only two appeals. So net-net, I think parents walked away knowing that the program was fairly judiciously done. Teachers have responded favorably to the program. We're in the process of developing curriculum for the ALP program and material supplies, et cetera, that would allow these youngsters the opportunity to advance. We stated categorically that ALP is not prison. A child could drop out at any point during the course of the year or at the end of the year if the parent or the child felt, this isn't a good placement for me. Conversely, children can come into the program, and opportunities in the spring will be given for that to happen. So that it really is an open door and opportunities do exist. So those are some of the outlines of the program. So far, feedback is good. Catherine Ador was appointed a director in part of ALP. She also picked up Marion Bernaby's work in art, music, and the grant. So we do have somebody who is helping to manage the program along with our school principals. Does that cover some of it?
Right, the curriculum.
Well, the curriculum is currently being written by the ALP teachers, so they're no secret. Robin Alvez, et cetera, are working on the curriculum. But I can say this, two ways that we're integrating curriculum into ALP is by developing programs and methodologies that we think are particularly appropriate to youngsters who need to be academically challenged. And so we're looking at the writing revolution, which will be for all students. But we are looking at components of that for the ALP youngster. We also are looking at critical reading increase, shared inquiry for the ALP students. And we're looking at great books for students as part of their English language arts curriculum. Their science curriculum will be project-based in terms of activities. Mr. Menck will be working with our science ALP faculty on that. And Brendan Gallivan, another director, is working with Laurie DeAndre, our literacy specialist and our ELA teachers on developing the curriculum. May I say, and I'm glad, Kiana, you asked the curriculum question, that for the first time, to my knowledge, we now have curriculum online that any member of this community can access. Kindergarten to fifth grade math and ELA. Any parent, any resident who wants to know, what will my second grader learn this year? Can go online through the district website, access math and ELA curriculum, and be able to see what the essential understandings are, what the year-long course outline is, and also certain resources, materials, and other types of state standards that are appropriate to that course. We have worked with teachers, continue to work with teachers, math and ELA. Our goal is by the end of this coming academic year, June 30th, July 1, we will add social studies and science, K to five, so that anyone can access that curriculum online. So we no longer need to print curriculum. It's available electronically to everyone in the community.
So you said social studies and science will come?
Will be a year hence, yeah.
Testing, testing. I'm there. Okay, thank you, Dr. Valente. You want to go again? All right, you want to go? All right, so I do have a couple things, real quick. My own personal, Dr. Valente, my son is in eighth grade, and he's in Mandarin. What I would like, honestly, for him to walk out in 12th grade and actually speak Mandarin. Speak Mandarin. So right now, he's learning how to write. He's learning the culture, and he does enjoy the class. But honestly, I think he can say, um, oh, shoo.
Hello and goodbye.
Yeah, hello and goodbye. So how can, this is the eighth grader, so I know that if you go around in the first grade, they're going to be able to speak Mandarin. But I want my child in middle school to speak. So how can we work together to ensure that that class, that middle school class, will speak the language? Because we know Mandarin is big, and when he walks out, I want him to have it.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. My two granddaughters are speaking Mandarin. They started in pre-tech, okay? Now, they have the advantage, our kindergarten, first, second, third grade students have the advantage. When did your son start?
Seventh grade.
Seventh grade? So even though they're young, and they can still learn language rather quickly, he doesn't have those first, five, or six years that the early childhood and youngsters do have. The curriculum, again, being developed. What are the outcomes? That students be able to read and speak Mandarin, at least to the degree of being able to go abroad, to visit abroad, to not simply survive in a country, i.e. China, where they can speak sufficient Mandarin to negotiate with the folks who live there, but also be able to be involved in components of that culture, the business, the commerce, the entertainment areas, that children would have that capacity. So we share the same goal. I think Brendan Gallivan, if he were here, would be hopping up in his seat, saying, this is great. It's what we want. We want parental involvement in having our children fluent in Mandarin and able to read Mandarin when they graduate from high school. If I can be personal, my grandson, Jared, went to New Canaan High School, took two and a half years of Mandarin, and does have that fluency, and does have that, and is using it now in college. So the opportunity is there, starting in seventh or eighth grade. That is certainly a realizable goal.
So we can speak to Mr. Gallivan, and we can really work with our middle schoolers to just make sure they have some foundations. So when they walk out, they can do what they're not doing right now. They are speaking in class, but I would love for him to be fluent in that. And then the last thing before my 30 seconds. We, I saw the state scores. We did increase the state scores.
State scores.
We did increase. I think that's wonderful.
Trending upward, trending upward.
But what you said before, I'm sick of being in the 30s. So as 30, 30% top.
Mid-30s, yeah, 30% proficiency, I hear.
As we continue to work together, we really have to, I don't know, how do we get over 48% of our students proficient? You know, so what are we going to do? I know you were doing foundations. I know you're doing Just Words. I know we have a lot of programs. But when are we going to really find out what's the problem? And identify and really work together as a community to help all of our students? And I'm not going to actually answer that now, because that's a big question.
He can try to answer it. You're out of time.
Okay, I'm out of time. Now that I'll ask a question. So it's a, it's a, it's a, we have to just really dig down very.
Well, enough, and thank you for the question. It's an excellent one. It's at the heart of what we do. And very briefly, again, we have made literacy the centerpiece of everything we do. I mean, to recite what we, the resources we have put into literacy. We have the foundations program. Okay, we moved to Just Words. We have a full Wilson program going up to grade 12, tier-one intervention. We trained upwards of 10 teachers to help in that process of intervention. We've entered Drew's Fontes and Penel, which is a level literacy program, establishing that a child at the end of kindergarten or first grade or second grade is able truly to read at that level. And if they're not, why not? What are we doing to support them? We have in addition to that, I mentioned, the writing program and the great books program. We have shared inquiry and critical inquiry, methodologies that we're using with our faculty. I think we're on the move. When you look at the data, beginning in third grade, we are looking at this trend up to sixth grade. However, at seventh and eighth grade, it trends down again. That's where we really have a concern right now. I think what we've been doing in the earlier grades is allowing us to move in this direction. I think we need to intensify what we're doing. I think we need to do it better and harder and keep moving with the professional development. And I think we'll continue the upward movement. We are looking at some special programs because quite frankly, our students with disabilities are having the greatest difficulty with state tests. And moving out of level one is a real challenge. So we are working very hard on looking at unique programs there, and what can we do with general and special ed teachers and training to try and help move students in the right direction? Greenberg is in the mid-30s. The state is at about 40% proficiency. Westchester is about 50%. Our goal should be to be minimally where the state is at and ideally where the rest of all Westchester districts are at.
Tracy Mears, do you have any other questions?
My mic doesn't work. I just want to let you know that I I just want to let you know that I share your concerns. When the state test scores came out, I was very happy to see that they went up. But then I actually woke up in the middle of the night sick because being in the 30s means that 60-something percent of our students are not proficient. And even as a parent myself, with three children, my two children that are at school testing age are proficient, you know, so I'm not worried about my individual children, but it, it's sickened me. And so we do have a lot of work to do. I personally am extremely concerned about the level of technology that our middle school students engage in. Some of our students fall asleep in class because they're on the internet late into the evening. Some of our students are very distracted, and that's across, across our country, right, with, with technology? And it's interesting that Dr. Valente said that in middle school, we're tending to see this. This is when they go through multiple changes. This is when they, you know, get into boys, they get out to woodland. There's a different amount of freedom there. And my daughter is just up here, so I see it myself as a parent. But I share your concern. I think many of us share your concern. And there has to be something that we can do through a small community, in a small district. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Iris McCleary.
Good evening. A few things. I started Bailey in 1957, and I graduated with my second class in 1965. And I've seen a lot of changes. We had a very diverse school. We had school board, the teachers, all the way up to the principal, guidance counselor. Very diverse. I'm sure you all, you all have worked very hard here. But when we, you need to take a look at the board and say, I think you can do a little better. Because we do have a diverse community. Not saying that you all aren't working hard, okay? But I think we need to do that. You need to break people in. You need to make the board represent the population. Also, that would be an interesting, now I saw real estate. I was going to break this up. But I think I have to. I have to break that because I have, I have a beautiful house on the market, and, and it should have been sold by now, but I get people coming in. What school district? First, what school district? Greenberg. We used to have a good meeting. I don't know what's going on. I really don't, and it's not good. I'm saying to you, we need help. I love Greenberg. I love Bailey. We also have to think about the people and their taxes. If this line doesn't pass, okay? I think we need to look back and say, okay, what can we do to improve and enhance the schools that we have? Okay? But I think we need to first start with ourselves. We need to, we need to be more diverse. We need the teachers, guidance counselors, and all of that to represent our population. Okay? Because it's not looking good right now. I talked to a lot of my classmates, very active with them, and they said they're so happy. Their parents wanted them to go to private school. They started to go to, you know, they wanted to be in Greenberg. I, I could have gone to Valhalla, but no, I chose to go to Greenberg myself. My house, the line divided my house. I had a choice. And I'm glad I went there because it was diverse. Very important. We have a TV show. You know, going back, I'm sure you all, if you haven't seen it, there was documentation about it, about how diverse this school was and it represented America, you know, America. And the teaching and everything, we had great educational studies and stuff like that. But I'm just concerned when I hear, well, what school district is this? But I'm getting this from people, okay? Coming into my open houses or someone very interested in placing a offer. As soon as they hear, Greenberg is, you know, Bailey. Most of it has been in school, I can tell you that. And I, I would love to see that change. I really would. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rita Jones.
Good evening. Okay, to be back on what you said, Dr. Valente. I still maintain that the community is concerned that we do not have TAs in the lower grades. Yes, ALP is a fantastic program for children who want, who need the higher learning in, you know, in the grade level. But we need the TAs to help the children who need the extra help. This is the district where a lot of people don't have the money for tutoring. And we know the districts around us, and there's nothing wrong with tutoring. But we need some help for the children. Not only because of the children, but the staff itself. You need an extra person. I know there's been thought that some of the TAs do not do what they're supposed to do. But in case of an emergency, most of them do. And in case of an emergency, if the teacher had to turn to one child and help them out, you need an extra body in the classroom. And I know you've not been hiring TAs. I've, I've been, I think to Dr. Chase about this. Yes, I did, several times. You can go back on the tape and move through. And I talked to you when I met with you during the summer also, and you, you told me what was going on about the TAs. So ALP is fine, but I think we should go back to getting some more TAs in the classroom. The other thing I'd like to go on your agenda before I continue with what else I have to say. On page four, item E, personnel instruction. Am I missing some? Am I missing something here? The appointment by a brother keeper mentor? I don't think there's a name there. Is there? Page four, item E.
We see a name.
What is the name?
We see a name.
What is the name?
Ladies, ladies, Watson should be there.
Right now, both were personnel non-instructional.
Oh, it's spoken. I'm sorry. I didn't see it. All right, we have the page.
Page four.
Six, health and wellness. How, um, is that a board committee or is it just a PTA committee? It's a district meeting. What? Are the people up in the board is involved in it? Because what I'm trying to say is you're saying refuse current health and wellness policies and improve mental and physical health of staff, faculty and students. I don't know how you're doing that because it seems to me, and it seems to me that, yeah, maybe the students. I don't know how you help the students, the faculty and staff. How is that done?
So that's a charge.
The handout. The handout. Dave's.
So, good evening, Joan. That's a charge of the committee. So that's their responsibility to resolve for the remaining of the school year. So at our public meetings, this, the committee, the health and wellness committee will speak out on how well they are meeting this charge and what they're doing to meet this requirement. So they don't have a answer quite yet, and that's something that the committee will be working on throughout the school year. So basically what you're looking at are a list of charges for each committee. In other words, this is their goals for the school year.
Well, I hope it works because Greenberg has changed. And I feel like Greenberg is a gem. I mean, it's no, it's a gem. I've lived here for a long time and it is. And, but I find that the, just the school community itself has changed completely. To me, the workers have a break. They're afraid of something, all right? And I know if they want to be honest, they'll let you know. They are. And the wording of many things that are sent, the letters that are sent to them, it's, it's like a threat. Okay? And if you want, if they want to be honest with you, they'll tell you. All right? I've spoken to many people in the community and the staff. Lobby God was a mistake. It was a bad choice. It still is a bad choice. Even though it was here according to Ms. Neal, it was here before she came here. It was a bad choice. In talking to a lot of people who knows about Lobby God, it is a bad choi, it still is a bad choice and should have been discussed because we know there are a lot of people in our community who do not have driver's licenses for whatever reason. And they have children in the district and they have a right to go into the schools. And I know now you just recently gave them all the documents they can use, but that should have been a thought long before Lobby God was put into effect. You should have considered those parents. Um, let's see what else. Welcome, Mr. Bartsch. Where are you? I meant to call you and welcome you. Um, I think all of the candidness was fantastic that so many people. And I hope they'll continue to run for the board. We need that in Greenberg. But welcome. And I know I'm finished, David, but I'm going to continue for one minute. Superintendent Chase, I think we're supposed to have a meeting and somehow we never got to that meeting. Can you tell me why?
Since you put it out publicly, um, yes, we were supposed to have a meeting. My secretary called you to tell you that I had to go to the emergency room. Okay, so since I put it out publicly, you know that, um, we, I was, I was ill. And we did not, and so we did not have a chance to meet. And I understand since then you've been in communication with my assistant superintendent about the topic in which we were supposed to meet because I received an email from her as a copy that she sent to you with regard to what we were supposed to discuss. So I believe that your concerns were addressed, but my secretary did call you to let you know why we didn't meet. And again, since you said it publicly, I vote publicly a reason why I did not meet.
No, she didn't tell me why. She, she just said you had something else to say. I would never ask why you weren't meeting with me. But I think the, the idea was not about Lobby Guard. It was, I have a tag that I've used all these years and I wanted to know. You mentioned at the last meeting that you were giving out special tags and that's what I wanted to make you feel about.
And I know, and I believe Mary was supposed to give you a special tag.
No, Mary said she didn't know anything about it. She wanted me to give, talk to you back.
So then, um, what I can ask is that because I was sick at the time of the supposed to meet, um, if you could please just schedule a meeting, if you could just call Helene in the morning to make sure that you get on my calendar ASAP. And I'm sure Helene is watching right now. Um, she knows that when you call that you can definitely get on my calendar ASAP so that we can resolve the tag issue.
Okay, because nobody's been calling me back. She said you would call me back when we have a time to meet, but no one called me back.
Okay, so if I, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on.
The next item on our agenda is the policy presentation. On the back table, you'll find policies. We have several policy amendments and one new policy to be considered for board adoption at the November 20th, 2018 meeting concerning smoking, tobacco use, school food service program, wellness, charging school meals and alcohol, tobacco, drugs and other substances. Copies of these policies are available in the district clerk's office. They will also be available in all the school buildings and on our website. All comments concerning these policies should be submitted in writing to the Board of Education. Next item on our agenda is our facilities presentation.
So before Mr. Falcone speaks, um, as you know, we're going to spend a lot of time for the remaining of the evening talking about the status of our facilities as well as going into the proposed construction project. Mr. Falcone is going to give you briefly the status of the district's facilities from every school, including the mansion and the fiscal plant itself. And so Mr. Falcone has an interactive presentation for all of you. The presentation will also be available on our website once he has completed. And so I ask that you please just follow along and we ask for your continued patience because we know that our consultants, our construction consultants are also here and they will be presenting right after Mr. Falcone. So Mr. Falcone, take it away.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mike Falcone. I'm the director of facilities and operation and maintenance. Okay, um, facilities, we have beautiful facilities, okay? Um, it comprises eight buildings. Um, our mission is to ensure the cleanliness, safety of our student staff, student staff members, communities through continuous assessment and maintenance of our, of our infrastructure and of our environment, okay? Our challenge, maintaining the structures throughout the district. Uh, this one of our buildings is the administration building. It was built in 1907. It's 106 years of age, okay? Approximately 22,000, 23,000 square feet. Uh, I'd like to show you some slides. They tell you that, um, a picture is worth a thousand words.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Falcone?
Yes.
I'm going to ask that if any board member cannot see your presentation, if they can just take a seat closer and there's also a screen up here as well.
Yes.
Because I know last time we had some issues seeing it. And anyone else, please pull up a chair and please move closer.
Okay, as I was saying, a picture is worth a thousand words. I have a thousand pictures. How many words is that? Okay? Well, I did cut it down. So back at the mansion, uh, there's areas that I wanted to point out. Uh, we have the, uh, the arrow, if you end up seeing. We have rot throughout the, uh, the buildings. And the reason why is because the roofs are leaking, okay? When water penetrates and, and the, throughout the buildings, that's what you're getting, penetration. It's really, um, destroying the foundation, the structures. We have pointing that needs to be going on, um, in our buildings. You see the crack up there and even closer. Our sill plates, um, up on the, on the mansion. It's a beautiful facilities, but unless you get a closer look, you're really not going to see what I notice and with the architect, architects notice and, um, you know, engineers. Um, as you can see here, it's a beautiful building, but when you get a closer shot, we're, we're, we're just party at the seams. Uh, our roofs, our roofs, I've said over and over and over again, okay? They're still back in 1960, 1920s, okay? The roofs, we have fascia boards that are rotting out. We have wood down the side. We have, um, you know, pointing that has to be done. Uh, when you get a closer look, we have a lot of structural damage in our buildings. Um, and these are, these are, like I said, of this building, these are few, few parts of, you know, of the bigger picture. Um, you know, of course, we keep on getting leaks. We're, we're replacing the ceiling tiles over and over again. And here's, you know, water damage and I'm showing you. This is the top of the, uh, the roof. Um, you can see, you can see the tops of the roof. We need roofing on the administration building. Um, I, like I said, I can just continue over and over again. I can get there a thousand pictures. Boilers. We have boilers that need to be replaced in all, all of our buildings. And controls, we have very old controls. Um, this is the administration building. Of course, you're, you're seeing the foundation walls. There's a lot of work to be done in, throughout the district. We have ECP. That's another 160-year-old building, okay? Back to the roofing. We end up with, uh, we have leaks inside. We're just constantly changing the ceiling tiles out. You know what? To make it, uh, look a lot nicer. We have our fascia boards, back to the fascia boards. Uh, electrical panels. Electrical panels are, need to be updated. This is throughout the rest of the district. I will show you all those pictures, okay? Um, we have fire alarm panels. Yes, we updated the one here at the high school. But you know what? Throughout the district, we, we need, uh, fire alarm panels. There's leaks again. And you just shows constant, uh, wiring, uh, ceiling, fascia boards. And this goes on and on and on. Water does a lot of damage. Roofs? If you do roofs, that's going to be, all the roofs in the district is going to probably cost around 10 million. That's just the roof alone. And then you have to fix, you know, all the damage that happened. Excuse me? Absolutely. Ella, let's just, no worries. Ella Jackson. When I was younger, I wanted to go to school here. I'm going to just tell you a piece of, uh, about myself. I lived down the street. I did go to White Plains. I thought this was an absolutely beautiful building. I come here 30 years later and, and I couldn't believe myself. But this was a private school and will be a private school with the administration that we have, okay? Um, Ella Jackson, 16, uh, 1969, 44 years of age. But if you don't keep upkeep with the, uh, uh, building, we're going to show you there's leaks constantly. We have old controls. We have heating that's out of control. So what, some, uh, you know, some rooms are too hot. Other rooms are too cold. The old pneumatic system that's, uh, that's in this building is just outdated and never up kept. We have ventilations, old electrical, um, the, uh, fresh air coming in, frozen shut. We have old controls, as you can see, 90% of them don't work. Um, these are, what, what they've done is they tried putting, um, uh, what is it? Plexiglas on the windows to try to make it, uh, double pane. It really doesn't, it doesn't, it helps very, very little. But these are plexiglass we're putting on the windows. Hyatt School, 1955, 58 years of age. Um, back to, we have pneumatic system there. Half of it doesn't work. We have the original boilers, old cold fire boilers that were, um, uh, that were made into oil fire burners, okay? There's much more efficient burners that are out there. Here's back to the controls. Control panels, half of them don't work. Electrical system, uh, here's more leaks, uh, throughout. We have, uh, you know, um, air gaps throughout all the windows, okay? Very energy efficient, it's just not there. We have single pane windows. We have gaps in the, uh, in the doors, yes.
I have a question. I, I hear you and I see what you're saying. But to replace tile when you know the roof is leaking really makes no sense. I'm listening to you with a lot of, you know, your problems.
Here you are.
Can I ask you, is there an increase in why we didn't fix the main problem first?
We are, we are, this is the roof. We are patching. We are patching, 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 patching. This is what we're doing. That's a capital project.
Money?
That's a capital project. Okay, capital projects, first thing you need to do. There's a process. Architects have, need to get involved.
So we have, excuse me, we have five buildings. And we have to split that one around. And so it's not enough to fix all the stuff in all the buildings. So what we do is we take care of the central. The ceilings that which could create mold, uh, we saw that has to be repaired. Uh, the roof, we have to budget that. And, uh, but that takes a lot of money. And of course, we try to minimize the taxes to the public by working with what we have.
They're still going sky high. Thank you.
Okay, you have to, um, um, vote on for a bomb, for all capital projects that this ha, this district hasn't had in many years.
Okay, so one other question for you, no question. If you did vote on the bomb for all of these repairs, which may come to 50, 60?
70 million. 75 million. Project every one, 70 million.
And we're asking right now for 171 billion?
Well, it's.
For the roof? Just the start of it, not even the whole project, but that's really just a little start. And it's a little bit lower. The whole project 2018, trust me, 2023 is going to, you know, it's like. And it's not even fascinating. Font Phillips, White House, the National. So 70 million would cover everything versus 171, just the whole roof.
But please, I do have in my slides upgrading of, of science labs, upgrading of all facilities, rooms, classrooms that really are not up to standard, okay? That, that's not going to take care of that. You're still going to have the, the same building, okay? And you would fix the necessities to have the same building. Also, in its, in that 70 million, um, once you open, sometimes when you open up a can of worms, you're going to might find a little bit more. So that 70 million is what they're stating. It could be more.
For repairs, that's being there for the.
For repairs. This is repairs only, okay? It, it, it is not, yeah, right. That is just necessity repairs. I have pictures of these windows. That's just the repair windows. That's repair the roof here. We still have the same auditorium, the same cafeteria, the same classrooms, the same science cla, uh, science rooms that you have here. I have a picture of the, we still have the 1960s science, uh, lab that's here. Yes.
The people here are really hit. Their taxes constantly, every year going up. A hundred percent market that they have money. They are leaving this area to go and, go someplace cheaper. Their taxes are high and we know the school has need. We, we, we see that. But I don't know how you're going to get and where you're going to get. But you should, you don't, they're buying on their taxes going up.
You know, one thing that Trump has only lent us 10 times, right? And he wants to increase our taxes and it might go up. So we're going to be really saying, yeah, we want to increase the, um, not that we don't want to use school. Everybody loves me, but if you don't have the.
But if you don't have the funds, I would, even if I went to a nursing home, we go to a nursing home, we went to. And there's several people in there that own houses on North Road, and the houses are abandoned by their nursing home. The children don't even want their houses, it's too expensive, and they can't break their taxes off. So, you gotta get new people coming in to build the bodies out of this, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, that was a, that was a bit of a said about, you worry about the cost of your house, the sale and all this sort of stuff. If we don't improve our schools to attract younger people, who's going to pick up? I understand, I pay taxes to them, we're the only fools that sit here and pass and raise our taxes and pay and serve on this board. But it's a necessity, I've been in this community for over forty-five years. I would say ten years ago, we proposed this. And at the time, it was about fifty-five, seventy million to do some of the things we wanted. And the voters rejected, so every time we kicked the can down the road. The school is deteriorating, and we all want good school, we want to infuse new technology in the building. And if we don't, you know, say, hey, gotta bite the bullet, yes, in the long run, it's going to increase our property value. And it's going to attract more people to the school district.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Like, I was in an upward housing committee, block grants, in name, in greenburn.
Right.
Number one, nobody can afford coming out of school with their taxes, I don't mean taxes, their school, their school loans. The pay goes off at a hundred thousand dollars. Then you have buy a car, it takes you seven years to pay it off. Then you have a thirty-three year mortgage. They're working until they're ninety-five, but basically the problem is, Trump has given us more jobs, we're in a four percent for unemployment. But you gotta work three of those jobs to make enough money.
That's right.
Just to pay back your student loans. So now, my, when I look at it, I look at all the kids I know that have girls scouts attending schools. We're paying off a hundred and forty thousand dollars in student loans, and guess what, they now have children who are getting ready to come. So we have, we are not having a realistic look at it. Now what we have to do is figure out, how are we going to get roofs on all the buildings? Because you fix anything on the inside, as long as water's coming in from the outside, it's not going to do anything but float down.
Which makes no sense, why did you do that?
So now, I expect this board to put, I, you know, and I, I want to say this, you're all volunteers, and I recognize this. But you have got to come up with your A game.
Yeah.
Your A game is not going to the community, saying this is what we want. The question is, how do we get what we need? You're looking at it from the wrong business perspective.
We're working with the state.
Honey, you're talking about.
No, well, no, what you say, we're not, you know, we're looking at it all as, believe me. We don't enjoy passing this on to the taxpayers, and reach here, sit down here, it's taxpayers too. So, we understand that, and so we're doing research, we're looking at all the different ways.
Why not go to the home loan, why not go to New York State Lottery, who states that my twenty dollars that I put in at the end of the week in scratches, has not come back to our school district? Our school districts are not applying for these grants. Now, the all blue white schools are, and they're writing the grant money and they are getting it. So where are our original writers that are going to write something that we can get money to bring back to the community? Change the hat, get out of the box. We can't do it that way. I don't want to come in.
I could talk about, about attempts at grant writing, but we need to.
No, this is what he needs.
What we've seen.
They're telling us what the problem is.
But we need to see it, we need to see the whole problem.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, RJ Valley, nineteen twenty-nine. I mean, it's a beautiful building, but when you look a little closer, back to the same thing, roof leaks. You can see the damages that the water has been doing to the building. We're very fortunate, we have air conditioners in every building, okay, in every room. But our electrical infrastructure cannot handle it, okay? So, you can see the parapet walls, we, we need pointing, we need cell plates, you know, lintels, pointings, electrical panels that I was talking about, foundation, back to the foundation walls, okay? Escavation around it, fire exits. You can see the wall, we ended up putting a bar across here, someone did, it's starting to rot in the side. And here's the filtration, electrical panel, back to electrical panel, back to old, old fixtures, old plumbing in, in the building. I mean, this is, this is what we're, we're, we're used to, the district's used to saying, okay, we need a stall, let's just get a stall, okay? All we're going to do is dig it out and you're just going to patch it, that's it. Because we're saying, the previous, that's good enough. Now, this administration, that's not good enough. Okay, so if we're going to, if we're going to do a patch job, as everybody was talking about here, okay? We're going to do a patch job, it's still going to look like this.
No, 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 we didn't talk about patch. We did not talk about.
Seventy, seventy million dollars is a patch, and as you, as you, you want, I'm just saying, if you do that.
We did not talk about a patch. It's the main problem, and then, yes, you're fixing internally. But patching, you're absolutely right, is what you have been doing, which honestly unfortunate.
The seventy million is not going to upgrade your facilities.
We heard.
Ventilation, ventilation throughout our districts. People did work in the past, all they do is cap things off, they don't reconnect it, okay? This is Bailey School, we can go, go all over to the high school, back to the windows, okay? Windows, right around here, they put plexiglass on it to try to make a, you know, double pane. Electrical panels need to be upgraded, here's our roofs again, here's wires on, on our roofs, you see the water? Okay, emergency exit windows, okay? Emergency exit windows are not the standard anymore, these are, these are back in nineteen sixty. You can see our ventilations, very, very old motors, we're working on ECP as, as long, as well as the bond, okay? To upgrade this, our facilities. We have old pneumatics, science nerves, okay? Gas, we don't have gas in this, in this building, okay? It's back nineteen sixty. We still, we still have an, an old infrastructure here. Back to our roofs, drainage, on, 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 is it, easterly drive? Water comes right through our windows, there's gaps all over, all over our, our envelope, okay? Exterior envelope there. You can see the rocks, close up, all around our, our building. Here's air conditioning again, we have air conditioning in every room, okay? This is the welcome center, welcome center is the same, going, oops, same thing. That was it, that. How do you go backwards? So, I, I just wanted to let you know is that, I wanted to show you a lot because a picture is worth a thousand words, yes?
So, I, I appreciate the presentation, but from a facility standpoint, do you maintain the capital plan? An active list of all the things that need to be repaired, replaced?
Distinct?
Active, so that when someone approaches you with, okay, well, how much is it going to cost me to repair, replace, or upgrade any of this? Which obviously whether we have a plan, do we know what the priorities are in each building? And can we list those out and say for certain where the money can go to, if we got it?
Correct me if I'm wrong, nineteen ninety or nineteen eighty is when New York State says they need a five-year capital plan?
Every five years.
Every five years since nineteen ninety, I think it is, the state requires, okay? We have a five-year capital plan, every five years they prioritize it, and this district hasn't touched anything in twenty years. Twenty years, and no matter, every year, every five years, we have that, and they, they, they tell you, we need to address these issues. Now, I can only, this previous administration, previous.
We had a couple of thousand dollar bond a couple of years ago, and began to make what changes we could with that amount of money, what we thought were the highest priority things that needed to be fixed. Well, we updated our five-year capital plan. We spent about, I think, three hundred thousand dollars worth of that, seven hundred thousand dollars so far. We can't take on any projects that are of any great size because that's not enough money to do it. Go ahead.
Yeah, and, and that's exactly one of my points, is that it's, it's up to the voters. So every, every five years, we do this capital projects, but we've never voted or tried to vote for one. At this time, it's been twenty years and it's.
I have a question. If you still, if you have a new, especially, the community vote, you still have to project a five-year goal for the upkeep, I think, right? What your thought? Therefore, if you're not getting the money now to upgrade everything that you have, how are you expecting to keep the new building?
New building, hopefully, will be more energy efficient, we're going to be saving money on the, on the energy efficiency, on the heating, air conditioning, electrical, okay? So, and hopefully that will rate into the facilities to maintain it at a high standard. And not only that, but for all your new programs that you have, that they're implementing, you're going to have the facilities that can, that can, that can teach the students. It's the, it's the best.
Not the program, because we have programs in any building, I understand that, I'm talking about the facility. If you are unable to upkeep, because the state is not giving you the amount of money it needs, in a new building, we all know that, we have new things. We had an addition, and we actually ended up with a leak. So therefore, new buildings do have additions. So, if the state is not giving you money now, I'm just wondering, is that a way to upkeep a multi-million, million-dollar facility? And we're going to be talking about the same thing, you can't even repair it. See, if you had this here twenty years ago, the roof, you wouldn't have all these today.
It is, it is more, it is more cost effective. It is more cost effective to maintain three buildings than it is for five buildings.
But you're still talking about the repair.
If, if I might, so, I'm new, there's a lot I don't know. And, and I always try to boil things down to the simplest, especially when you're trying to boil the ocean. I just try to find the, you know, I interrogate reality and I try to figure out what the smallest things are. I have a ten-year-old car, and it's coming up to the point of where every time I go to the dealer, it's costing me thousands of dollars to fix it. I can do that for a while, at some point, I will have to buy a new car. I'm oversimplifying it, this is a lot of money, but I think that's where we are.
I'm in agreement.
Go ahead.
And the amount of terms you have for four quotes, thanks for the business four quotes, dimension that can now be made. People don't have the money, who will be like, two? We talked about how to prepare, renew, like I said, walk in and cop any money. Now, you're taking your car, and it's ten years old.
I'm one of twelve.
I got sixty-nine months, ten and thirty, I got eighty-five C, this is getting a good admission, go back to this, Sam has radio, all my cars. I have ninety-three old buildings last one, they're all good, do you want it?
It's not safe.
I have two thousand four van for my little three-point car. You know how I get off on running? You're running because I never let you go. So now, my two thousand van, my four-runder van, I just got three thousand dollars for, for transmission. I bought it second hand, but you know what? That transmission should last me as my life. So if we take care of what we have, right?
Right.
Now, it's not the fault of this administration, that twenty years we went by. But I'm saying, if you actually sit down, figure out where we're running the money from, and money is always the money.
So that's why. That's why I use the phrase interrogate reality, there's where we actually are and how we have to respond.
Yeah, you are.
And I don't think, I think twenty years in the glut, however it happened, whatever it happened, has, has us where we are.
Exactly, and where we are is we're not getting the real things. It's just like Vera said, we're going to sell those, it's just like we sold the buses. All of us were pissed, selling the buses. We got people in, they wanted the buses sold, I said, hey, sell the buses, I'm not going to business, I'm not going to go on. But we make that decision, it's the worst decision we can make. It seems like we don't have a house. We're going to sell our house, build a new house, and end up with nothing, all right? Now, see, we better stop and rethink it. We have to be physically responsible, and nobody understands what a millionaire did. But we all know who the billionaires are, where they are, so what do we want? We're the type of black person who, but any, any dollar I get, you're going to take credit for it, you okay? You're going to take credit on what I do, right? If I do it, I do it.
One more question? One more question? One more question?
One more question, so you gave us this, you gave us the summary of the status of it, without selling it. Cole, what was the point, what is the point of it? Is, are you saying that you want seventy million dollar infusion money into the district while we're doing the capital improvement? Or are you saying, instead of doing this, we're going to do the school?
Instead of, instead of doing seventy dollars, seventy million dollars with repairs, a new building, also getting rid of two, three buildings to maintain, is more cost effective and more energy efficient than it is to do seventy, seventy million, okay? Our facilities are in dire need of, of work and a revamp. This building here is dire need of, of total renovation, total gut, okay?
But we have a bad winter.
Excuse me?
We have a bad winter, you just said dire need, if we have a bad winter, what about the roofs?
We've had that winter.
We had that last year.
Yeah, last year.
So what might happen if we lose town? Are we prepared financially to make sure our roofs are okay?
Financial, I can't, I can't, can't answer that one.
So what I'm going to encourage the community who's here to do is to wait for our next presentation. I think Mr. Falcone gave us the status of our facility to some degree, because there's a lot more that we haven't covered. But our next presentation is from our construction engineers, our architect, as well as our public relations consultants, who will talk about the plans moving forward. So I thank the community advisory committee members who have stayed here to hear this portion of the presentation, but they all go hand in hand. So you can still continue to ask your questions, and I think for this gentleman, the next presentation will answer your question as to why we're doing what we're doing and why Mr. Falcone made this presentation. So I'm going to ask the team, sure, but I tend to finish my sentence. So I'm just going to ask the team to just come up, if you guys could just come up and get ready while we answer Ms. Jones's question.
Mike, you said three buildings, tell me about that, I know the F Jackson is on campus already, why not three buildings?
If, if you go with a new building, you're going to have the new building, you'll have Ella Jackson, and you'll have the high school.
Ella Jackson will be already, they are in campus already.
Right, it'll, it'll be renovated, we'll, we'll be maintaining three buildings instead of five. No, one new building. One new building.
You'll get a three to eight new building, Lee F. Jackson will be renovated, the high school, middle, the high school will be renovated.
So that's in this next presentation, a clear, yeah, so Ms. Jones, just stay with me here, don't, don't leave, just stay with me because the next presentation. Uh, in my car, I have a granola bar.
I have a light saber.
Someone has something towards me here, so the people. So the people are whipping out food now. And I saw someone going into their bag to get some food. So, but, but, but just...
I got a lightsaber, sugar.
And just for the purpose of time for the community, we're gonna go over the format of what the new proposed project is going to look like. So we'll answer that question wholly. And we have renderings and we have pictures that will really help you all to really conceptualize the direction we're trying to go. Once again, those of you who are sitting in the back, please take a look here. If you can't see, just move forward. Move forward because there are renderings and we want you to be able to see them. So I want to introduce you all to our construction firm, our architect, as well as individuals from Focus Media who are here just so that the community will know who they are because they've been working with us. They've been working with the CAC committee as well. So I'm gonna start with Focus Media.
Hi, I'm Nicole Keller. I'm from Focus Media. Happy to be here today. We're looking forward to presenting. If we could just ask everyone to hold their questions until the end of the presentation so you see it from start to finish, then we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I'm Tina, I'm the CDSAS. I'm with CS Arch. I'm one of the partners.
Say it again.
My name is Tina, I'm the CDSAS. I'm with CS Arch. I'm one of the partners and one of the project designers.
Josh Stover is the president of Focus Media and one of Nicole's colleagues.
Daryl Mestres is CS Arch, architect and engineer on the project.
I'm Fred Wells from Tiv Miller Associates for environmental consulting for the review of the proposal.
And Kevin Austin from Savin Engineers, construction manager.
So tonight, I know that there are a number of you who were here at the last board meeting and I think we wanted to try to step back and prepare a presentation that was thorough that explains where the vision was, where the goals have come from, and where we started and where we hope to be in the near future. So the agenda tonight, we'll go through the district visions and the goals. We'll talk about the process to date. Fred is going to give an update on the secret process and the traffic study results. We'll talk about the project scope overall, the cost and the investment that we're looking for. We'll work through the design of the buildings and start to show you what some of the spaces will look like. And then we'll talk about next steps.
So before we go into the goals and the vision of this project... Sure, why not? Before we go into the goals and the visions of this project, the first thing I'd like to do is acknowledge the CAC, which is the Community Advisory Committee. If you are a committee member, first of all, I appreciate you still being here and waiting for the presentation. But I thank you for accepting our invitation. Can you please stand so that you can be acknowledged because you really helped to put this together? The CAC, don't be afraid, CAC. Show who you are. So, and that's not all of them. There was a gentleman who was here, he left, but we have quite a few members. The diversity of our community is represented in the CAC and they really worked very closely with CS Arch, Focus Media, as well as Savin Engineers to help put this proposal together through their input. And so we appreciate them being here. So the vision and the goals for what we are proposing to you is that we have unification on one campus. And we're gonna talk about why that is important. Safety and security being our foremost and utmost responsibility to our children and to our community. In addition, creating learning spaces so that we can optimize the learning for all students and giving those students those instructional opportunities that do not exist in our current building structure. And lastly, infrastructure long-term planning, which Mr. Falcone touched on just a little bit earlier. So let's talk about unity on one campus very briefly. As you know, our students transition from school to school to school. In fact, they make five transitions before they actually leave Greenberg Central School District. And Ms. Weems, you know, during that transition, children tend to lose friends, gain friends. Children do not have enough time, ladies and gentlemen, to truly become part of the school culture. They spend two years here and they move on. And in moving on, they have to meet new teachers, new administrators, new philosophy, new buildings. And so we understand that if we minimize, and research tells us that we minimize transitions, it will improve social as well as academic performance. And that is what we're aiming for. We want to improve school parental involvement, community involvement, student attendance, as well as student behavior. We want to increase collaboration among teachers. This allows us to not only have horizontal articulation with our teachers, but also too, vertical articulation, which means grades three can have conversations with grades four and five about what is to expect the next grade for our children. And we don't have those opportunities currently in the fashion that we know that is best practice. We want to increase collaboration among our teachers, our students, and our programs across the grade levels, as I just mentioned. We want to sustain close student-teacher relationship. And as I said during those transitions, you can't do that. You really can't do that. Students need to feel a part of the school because school is their second home. The majority of our students spend more awake hours at home, I'm sorry, at school than they do at home. We want to also provide community use for activities as well as events. Each building will have its own community space so that you all as a community can be a part of the school building. We want you to be a part of the school culture. We realize that too, there's cost savings of operating costs, and I believe Mr. Falcone spoke on that, energy use as well as transportation. We can save on transportation by unifying our community schools. Safety and security, like I said, being the foremost responsibility for us. We know that with a new building, with a new facility, that we will improve safety and security through architecture, through technology, and active security measures. It is our goal to implement the best security measurement and protocols in our new buildings. The learning space. Well, we want to provide instructional opportunities for our students. And we know that in order to do so and prepare our students for those 21st century experiences, that we need to provide them 21st century space. We have turn-of-the-century facilities currently. It does not allow for our students to engage in the way we know what a best practice should look like if we're preparing our kids to be global citizens. We have programs such as our Mandarin program, which was discussed earlier, our international Baccarat program, which I really believe we're gonna become a fully authorized school district. Our robust STEAM offerings, as well as our WISE programs, will be able to maximize those learnings within those program structures in a new building. We also are looking forward to having outdoor educational spaces and we're going to improve our athletic, art, and community use. The infrastructure upgrades and long-term planning. We want to identify, we want to prioritize short and long-term infrastructure needs. We're going to design this new building with efficiency and the students' health in mind. We're talking about clean, green schools. We have a wind turbine on our campus. Have you all had an opportunity to see that? No? Okay, well, I want you to take some time and come, you've seen it. I want you to take some time and come to our high school facility, where we now call it the STEAM, Vestabue, what is it called? The STEAM Quad, the STEAM Quad, to see our new wind turbine. That is just the beginning of what we're going to offer in terms of energy efficiency. We're gonna design with longevity in mind, not just the now, but we're talking about sustainability well after many of us are no longer here. I didn't want to be morbid. I didn't know how to say that without sounding so morbid. But we're talking about sustainability. We're talking about fifty years from now. I plan to be here fifty years from now, Mr. Weems. I don't know about you, but I plan to be here fifty years from now. Listen, my grandmother turns one hundred tomorrow. Longevity runs in my family, so I hope to be here. Thank you. But we're talking about sustainability. And again, the energy performance contract, which our engineers and our architect will speak about very shortly in the presentation.
So we just want to...
You were awesome.
So this gentleman asked a question, and this is really Mrs. Jones's question as well and is fully answered here. What is this project framework going to look like? Ms. Dardison tried to answer your question. She did a great job at it because she's part of the CAC too. We're going to build a new three-through-eight building. We're going to expand LeF Jackson to make it a true pre-K through two building, where it's truly an early childhood facility. We're gonna close Richard J. Bailey and Higginson Schools. And we're going to convert Woodlands Middle High School into a true high school so that we can utilize and maximize this space for true high school experience. We're gonna provide outdoor athletic and educational spaces in this new facility too. Ladies and gentlemen, this is what our children deserve. This is what our children need. This project is not about me. This project's not about them. This project is not about you. It is about these young people who live in this community who deserve to be in a world-class school district, in a world-class facility. We're doing this for them. We're doing this for children who are not yet born. We're doing this for the two-year-olds who have moved into this community with their families, who will enjoy having these facilities, having these state-of-the-art opportunities to learn. That's what this is all about. So please have your eyes and ears open as our engineers and our PR folk and our architect talk about the future of the Greenberg Central School District.
Hey, this is, you're hard to follow.
You got this, Tina. I don't know what to talk about.
And this is, this is actually quite boring in comparison. I just want to talk about the process to date. So as Dr. Chase mentioned, we had a community construction advisory committee and we met over the course of, gosh...
Oh my God, we've been meeting since June.
Months. And it was a group of about twenty, I'm going to say at least.
And still growing. We just added Ms. McLeary.
Right. And it was, you know, a cross sort of reference of the community and they were incredibly helpful. They provided a lot of information. They talked a lot about what they thought the community would support about their children who are in school or their friends' children. And so they were really informative in moving forward. We also had several district administrative programming meetings where we actually met with all the administrators, the principals, the technology director, the STEAM director, to talk about their current programs, to talk about the programs that they hope to bring in and how we can support them through architecture and space. Internally, we've had design team coordination meetings and design and development meetings. So we've been working together with Savin Engineers, looking at ways to save money, looking at what actual costs will be and how we can implement the project over the course of several years, including phasing and construction phasing and implementation. The secret process, which we'll talk about a little bit later, that began quite a while ago and is, we're in an analysis period where we have some results to discuss tonight. Another piece of it was our preliminary submission and review with State Education Department. So we did that already several months ago where Dr. Chase came up to Albany and we met with the State Education Department to talk about the project, to sort of, to give them a very good understanding of what the project is and if they would support it. And we did find that they were very supportive of it. And really, they're supportive of the idea of consolidating to go down from five schools to three because they understand what transitions do to students. Project cost analysis, we've essentially been doing that all along from day one. And we'll talk about that tonight. And we continue to refine the scope and to fine-tune it as we move forward. At the end, sure. So I'm gonna hand it over to Fred to talk about the secret update and Fred will review that.
Good evening. We've been working on, with the team, working on an environmental impact statement. The draft impact statement was written a month or so ago and has been put out to the public for comments. There was a public hearing held and we received comments. And right now, we're in the phase what's called final environmental impact statement, which is writing responses to those comments so that the board has the information needed to look at the whole environmental issues that are related to this project to make a determination, a final determination on environmental issues. So where we are right now is in the process of kind of finalizing the community input and the input that we have from our studies that we've done. In that process, we evaluated a plan from back in July that the architects and engineers had put together. And that was what was subject of the draft EIS. And shortly after the draft EIS was prepared, the site plan has changed, which often happens in a project as the design development happens and you realize better ways of doing things. And so in the final EIS, we evaluated a slightly different plan, which relocated the three-to-eight building. And in doing that, say it's over nine acres of clearing and grading and a significant amount of rock removal was removed from the scope. So obviously, this cost came down for the project, but it also benefited the environment very significantly. So that plan is in the final EIS. In addition, we, for the draft EIS, we looked at the traffic situation, which as the community knows, the traffic in this area gets pretty intense and a lot of delays. And go to the graphic on the two areas. The east and west side of the campus, obviously, where the circles are, are the general areas we looked at for intersection movements and the traffic volumes based on actual counts that were done and to evaluate what the current situation is right now and what it would be when the project is fully built. So that's what we evaluated in the final, in the draft EIS. But expanded on that in the final EIS. We, in the process in between the two, we consulted with the Department of Transportation about how they look at roads and some of their state roads are the primary roads feeding this area. And they were very supportive of us evaluating the need for a traffic light at Packapalm Road and West Hartsdale Avenue. So we looked at that in more detail in the final EIS. And determination was made that yes, it does meet the warrants to put in a traffic signal would actually improve the situation, not only at the intersection for people getting in and out of the Packapalm Road, but it would probably help intersections up and down West Hartsdale to a certain extent, even though we're adding traffic by this project. And so we, that valuation is in the final EIS. It is in there for DOT to review as they did the draft so that they can have input on that aspect of what's being proposed. And the signal is part of this program right now. It's proposed as a piece of the whole bond referendum to put in the signal. In addition, we looked at the other side of the campus, Juniper Hill Road area. And there, there's now, at both ends actually, there's no capacity problems. But at the east end, there's site distance problems, which have been there for many years. And we know the town has looked at it from various aspects. And it's not a really solvable situation because of the geometry of the road, but there are opportunities for possibly improving it. So we've put that into the EIS, that the district would be willing to work and should work with the town to take a look at what the town could do to improve the situation. And we have a recommendation in the document for that. So essentially, where we are right now with the final EIS is, as I say, it's a document that will be made public once the board has reviewed it and accepted it as complete for circulation. And it is open to public review for ten days. And in the meantime, we'll be looking at fine-tuning that document for, towards preparing the finding statement for this board.
Thank you. So you probably heard, project cost to date, we started at well upwards of over a hundred and eighty million dollars. What Fred just referenced, us reciting the new three-eight school, which is actually going to sit where the football field and the parking lot currently are because the land is already cleared and graded. That saved us about five million dollars, if not more, right there, just in that. And it's less environmental impact. We also just, we also just completed a thorough survey and analysis of the infrastructure, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire alarm systems in both Woodlands and Jackson. And what we can do through energy conservation measures to upgrade and modernize the systems in those buildings to have the energy savings pay for that project. And actually, and that's what's called an energy performance contract. It's actually, it's a project of doing energy conservation measures that actually the energy savings pay for the project itself. So it's a no cost to the district or the taxpayers. So it's a no-cost to the district or the taxpayers. It's fully paid for and funded through the energy savings in an eighteen-year simple payback. What we found is just by modernizing a lot of the infrastructure and the systems in both Jackson and Woodlands, we could pull an additional $4 million out of this project by putting in central air conditioning in both buildings, by renovating the old electrical infrastructure, by pulling a new gas line to both buildings, so we're not running heating on fuel oil in both buildings. We can pay for all of that through the energy cost savings, and we can pull that money out of the capital project and focus it more on the buildings and the learning spaces and the learning environment. So where we're at right now is a total project cost of $166 million. Now, what every one in the room is probably interested in is what's the tax impact? Per $100,000 of assessed property value, the monthly tax increase is approximately $20. The average home price in Greenberg Central School District is a little under $487,000. That equates to $97 a month. That's over a thirty-year average of the project. That tax impact will fully fund this project. Also, in addition to that, with the plan to sell Bailey and Highview, right now, we're carrying...we've done appraisals on both buildings. We're carrying approximately $20 million in the sale that does not...is not reflected in that $20 and $97 per month. When Bailey and Highview sell, that money will be used to pay off the bonds, reduce the debt to the district, and therefore, reduce the tax impact even more.
I might add one comment with regard to the energy performance contract. One of the benefits to that that might be beneficial to acknowledge or understand is that for an energy performance contract, the state requires that before a district can actually enter into such a contract, they...it must be proven that the payback is going to be there. So it goes through the entire state. They review it. There's an independent reviewer that goes through it. So in this case, they realize that a company may come up and say, honey, well, whoever, that, ooh, we can provide this energy performance. You hear that with regard to solar in some cases, and perhaps homeowners will never see it. Well, the state has required that districts, as well as the architects and engineers that are working with them, must provide all of that documentation. The benefit to the district in this case is, as was mentioned, those things that do not pertain necessarily to the actual instructional space, and that's what you want. So let something else care for the windows or the boilers outside of perhaps the specific area that requires the energy, but focus on...let the bond focus on what the needs are for the individual areas for the students. So the effort that it takes of to go through to make sure that happens, that's what the architects and engineers are for, to be able to provide you that information to ensure that the state will approve such a project so that the focus can really be upon the students. So I wanted to highlight that.
So this is an overview of the site. You can see the property line that the district owns, the dashed white line that kind of wraps around. That's the golf course up at the top, and then it wraps around. There's this little sliver of land, comes down and wraps around Woodlands and back up at Jackson. So this is Jackson. This is the location of the new 3-8 school with a relocated turf field and track. And again, this was flipped at one time. What we realized is that we could save a lot of land clearing by building the building on the actual turf field that we have to replace anyway, because it's beyond its useful life. We're also looking at connecting road from Jackson all the way through that connects through the campus, back out to Pat Capone, but also connects to Woodlands. I'm going to go through each of these a little bit in more detail so you can see them blown up. So Jackson. Jackson...we'll talk about the addition to the building as well. Jackson will have a separate student and bus drop-off area that comes off of the main drive. This is one of the safety measures we're looking at to really keep drop-offs from parents completely separated from buses so that students aren't crossing buses. So they come in, they drop off here. There's a new plaza area that the students can be dropped off as well. We'll redo the paving, the parking, provide the appropriate handicap spaces, and all the requirements that we need to meet. The road then continues down. This is Woodlands High School. You can see most of the paving area and the drives are existing. We will be resurfacing all of it. We're also providing a restored soccer field, looking at making improvements to the existing softball field, redoing the tennis courts and providing two basketball courts. The other big thing that we're doing is providing accessible access to the front doors of this building. So each of the...from the auditorium side and the gym side, we'll be putting in a handicap accessible ramp off of the parking lots. So the 3-8 school sort of sits in the middle of the site between both the high school and Jackson. One of the benefits of moving the building to where we're showing it now is that we could share a lot of the drives, which reduced the amount of paved area we had to include. And we also could share the parking lot. So the parking lot that sits at the front of the building is also used for the field and for events after school. This drive is the loop drive that connects to Jackson. And then there's the...on the southern end of the site, it connects back to Woodlands to the south. We're looking at adding the new track and turf field. Again, reduce land clearing, shared parking, and reduce paved roads. We'll be putting in a new shot put and discus fields to support track and field, a multipurpose natural turf field that sits both behind the building and some additional playing fields, and elementary school playgrounds to support the students at that grade level. Some of the site features we're looking at are stormwater management, so making sure runoff isn't seeping into areas where it shouldn't be. And also, again, the separate student and bus drop-off for parking. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail in the building plans, but what this is showing, this is Jackson. The dash line indicates the existing building that's up to the north, and then the building addition. So we're basically adding about twenty classrooms to support pre-K K1 and 2, and redoing a lot of reorganization in the building. There'll be a new secure entrance, the twenty new classrooms, a new elevator. Right now, the building is actually not accessible. So if you come in the main door, you can't get to the lower levels, other than a stair, unless you go outside, walk across the site down to the back door that should be locked. The 3-8 school... The new 3-8 school is really divided into two learning communities. On the right-hand side is the 3-5. So this portion of the building is closer to Jackson. And then on the left-hand side is the 6-8 school, again, closer to Woodlands. It's a two-story building with all the appropriate classrooms and separate entrances for both the 6-8 and the 3-8. Shared...there'll be some shared services, just for economy. The gymnasium will be a large gymnasium that is divisible into two gyms. The cafeteria would function the same way, one large cafeteria that has a dividing wall. So it's able to accommodate both students for separate lunches, but can also be used for community and for events. We're looking at building an auditorium that seats about 500-plus spectators. I'm using an art wing to support the arts here, and all the appropriate classroom spaces and specialized spaces. This is a second-floor plan. So again, this is the 3-5 wing. It really just stacks onto itself, and the 6-8 wing that does the same. Couple of things just to point out. Circulation is really clear and concise. And what that does, it helps for sightlines that you can see from one end, from the corridor down to the other end for safety and security. So that we're starting to actually develop what the building will look like. And so this is a view looking at the middle school entrance and the community room, which is right actually over here. So what we are trying to do is to really create a new, modernized facility that really optimizes learning and teaching environments. It's healthy, it's secure, it's safe. It blends in with the surroundings. We'll be focusing the design on being efficient, energy-efficient, sustainable, providing parking that's appropriate, handicapped accessibility, and really engaging the community in the building, offering the students a sense of pride. This is a view of the elementary school entrance on the opposite side of the building. So this is where the 3-5 kids would come in. You can see that these...the entrances are kind of in... there's one on this side, and then there's another over here. Each of them is a secure entrance vestibule, so a double-lock vestibule that sits adjacent to the main office, where there would be a security officer in a space that essentially buzzes somebody in with an area for that person to wait before actually entering the building.
So these are some images of spaces inside the 3-8 building you just saw. This is the second-floor media center. What this does is this looks out onto a green roof and a roof garden, which then overlooks the new natural playfield behind. So it's getting the students involved with the environment and, you know, starting to learn about those things, but also the sustainability aspects of buildings and sites and things like that. So this is...these are just some of the renderings that we'll flip through briefly to show you where we're at with the design. So again, this is on the second floor. This is the large space, just for a frame of reference. I'll go back to a floor plan. Sorry. That's this space right here, looking out onto this green roof, which then looks out onto the natural playfield. And I think there's some shot put and discus fields behind there.
So some of the things to point out in these spaces that Daryl's showing is that they're age-appropriate. These are spaces that are both functioning for 3-5, for elementary school kids and middle school kids. The library itself would be designed so that the one end is for middle school, the other end is for elementary. But the spaces are meant to be flexible in a way that you can move and adjust the arrangements of furniture to suit the particular act or program that's happening at the moment. So this is one of the STEM labs, the 3-5 STEM lab, grades 3-5. And again, what you can show...what you can see is that there's a multitude of different ways to teach and to learn in these spaces. Natural daylight is a big factor in all of these spaces. You can see that there'll be space for kids to kind of gather and huddle around one area. There's desks, or traditional-like desks, but they're mobile so that you can go from individual learning to student...to group-based learning, and areas to support building and hands-on activity.
So this highlights what we talked about a little bit earlier, world language classroom. This is just a typical world language classroom at the 3-5 grade level, where we're really trying to promote and enhance the world languages at an earlier age to get them prepared for the fluency as they move on to middle school. So this is just an example of spaces dedicated to that. So moving on to Woodlands, what we'll show you in a second with some of the renderings, we're providing new accessibility outside, but also a new main entrance and a way to get into the building from the front. But other than that, it's all pretty much major renovations of everything within this building, including the entire building envelope. So all the windows, the roofs, the doors, minimizing entrances and exits for safety and security, the whole...basically, the entire building, but the interior structure of this building.
Also, organizationally, we're really looking at reorganizing the high school to support the way the high school program functions. So for example, we're adding new music and band rooms that don't necessarily exist, that support the auditorium, so sitting behind them now, and an accessible corridor that you can actually go directly there. Right now, you actually have to walk outside the building into another door to get to those music classrooms. So really creating a music and performance arts area, and then doing the same with the arts, so creating art spaces that function together as studios, that can utilize storage, shared storage spaces. And then looking at a STEM-based center that kind of pulls all these pieces together. The two wings of the building, the existing wings, are really functioned for both math and science and STEAM, as well as a department for the humanities. And special education is worked in throughout all of the spaces to integrate them into general classrooms and general organization.
So this is the current main entrance. We're guided by the auditorium. None of this is here. A new canopy. What you'll see in the next rendering is a new accessible ramp, an ADA accessible ramp to get out down into the building, and a new secure vestibule. So, you know, for visitor entrances, for student entrances, everything is safe and secure. This is down towards the front of the building, looking out into the new canopy with a connecting corridor that takes you back into the new...the music wing, the revamped music wing, which all the music spaces will now be behind the auditorium, and that will be one area for all of that. Next space we want to take a look at is actually across the commons area here, which if you walked right out of here, the space that's currently that large, open area before you get to the library, that's what this will look like. So what it is, is it's like a new commons and gathering space for all the students in the high school, looking down into what will be the new media center, rather than a library.
So one of the ideas and one of the...I guess one of the the aspects of 21st century learning is creating spaces where students can both engage sort of socially, but also engage in groups to learn. So it's providing spaces that are not traditional instruction spaces, sort of found spaces where a group of students can just get together and work on any assignment. But also, it allows somebody who wants to be more individualized to do that as well.
So we've been talking about the different programs that your district is very proud of. So a couple of them that we're going to highlight and their connection with the spaces are the STEAM, WISE, the International Baccalaureate that was brought up earlier, and the world language programs, because the point is to prepare the students for later success, whether it be college, career, and just to be problem solvers in our world. So these programs inspire students to inquire, to ask those big questions, to think, investigate, create, both independently and in groups, like we talked about. And these spaces offer the opportunity to collaborate so they have the skills that they need when they enter that bigger world and they need to collaborate with coworkers and peers. So the 21st century learning spaces, they promote project-based collaboration. Some things that they all have in common, they're adaptable. We were talking about that with the library space. Ergonomically sound, flexible, mobile. So if things change, and we know as educators that one year, this is something that we're promoting, and maybe we're changing it up a little bit next year, they're flexible. And they're tech-savvy.
What you see here is actually a rendering of just the general classroom in this building.
So the modern classrooms promote hands-on learning because research shows when you use your hands and your brains, the students are more curious, they're more engaged in learning, and they're more innovative. and your brains, the students are more curious, they're more engaged in learning, and they're more innovative.
And this rendering is a fabrication slash STEAM lab of a high school.
21st century design also includes ample natural daylight. And I'm sure you noticed that through a lot of these renderings and we all know that that makes a difference, especially living here in the Northeast, right? Sound insulation, all the different things that are distractions to our students. We're trying to keep things like that in mind so they can do what they're here to do, which is learn. Information accessibility, student circulation, and promoting that interaction, that's so important. So when students investigate, create, and problem solve independently and collaborate, they gain these skills. Multiple idea generation, innovative thinking, communicative proficiency. I know it was brought up earlier about the language programs. So we had shown one of the earlier classrooms with the world language programs because it's not just about a teacher being in front and lecturing and just about the grammar, but for students to have a chance to interact and try out the language with each other and through technology. Teamwork productivity and efficient decision-making. The modern world language program, that's the example I was talking about. So this is another example of the world language at the higher level with the high school students and the ability to access technology and speak to someone anywhere in the world and interact with your peers. So why invest? You know, we already learned that there are obviously a lot of issues. There's leaking roofs, there's things that Mr. Falcone showed us in pictures. But the dividends include increased local home values and improved student achievement. So there was a journal, we're almost finished. There was an article in University of Pennsylvania Quarterly Journal of Economics that had this quote, "Passing a measure causes home prices to rise by six percent or more. We also find some evidence of effects on student achievement several years after bond passage." And that was just one big research into schools that decided to make these bigger investments in their students. And obviously, there's no guarantee of anything, but that was one study that we wanted to share with you.
There are several studies that actually suggest that across the country. That it's not only the student space, an effective student space that you can deliver a program, you can teach and learn and interact, but it's also pride. Pride has a very significant effect on student learning, health and safety as well. You know, being comfortable in a space and feeling safe also improves academic performance.
So we're still, as you see, working to finalize the plan. We're hoping to see the board put forth a resolution for this to go to a vote for residents to make the final decision. And when that resolution, if that resolution, does pass, we will move ahead with communications plan. So doing what we're doing tonight as far as getting the information about this plan out to all the voters in all different ways, everything from press releases to fact sheets to videos to putting that information on the website, social media, any way that we can reach people, sending a postcard to all the residents to remind them that this vote is happening and make sure people know so they have a say and can make that decision. So I think if anyone else have anything to add or are we ready to take questions? Sir.
Yeah. So this is great. Are you going to share with the spacing schedule, number of years? How are you going to handle swing space of schools? When students will, can expect to go to a high school as being renovated or when a parent comes through the system and maybe Jackson is no longer available?
Yeah, so the first priority is obviously all the site work, building a connecting roadway. We need to get the new track and field up and functional for football season and track and field season, but also the renovations to Jackson and building the new three eight school. Because we have to do that before we can consider selling Bailey and Highview and also before we can consider moving seventh and eighth grade over to the new three eight school. And then, once we renovate and add on to Jackson, build the new three eight school and move seven and eight out of this building, we now have space freed up to use a swing space where, you know, we can move students around and renovate while it's occupied, which everyone in this room, you know, on our side has done because it's the nature of public school work in New York State. As you almost, you try to get as much done as you can during summers, but almost always you're working on projects and you're working on construction while the building is occupied. Now to answer your question about schedule, the idea is really to, you know, when this vote passes, move right into design. When this vote passes, move right into design the next day and actually submit the site work package, the Jackson package and the three eight school to the state education department in fall of 2019. Get it approved, get a bid, contracts awarded, and start construction in summer 2020. We anticipate that taking about two years. And in the meantime, we will be renovating or designing Woodlands, getting that up to the state education department. And what we're looking at, I think, right now is from start to completion, 2019, or actually December 2018, we start full-on design. And I think the final ribbon cutting, we're anticipating 2024 or 2024 of everything.
I really appreciate seeing this wonderful presentation. The only thing I'm sorry about is my two children will probably not benefit from it. But I love this whole district. I think it's a fantastic school district. We went through, my husband and I have been here since 1998. And when we first came here, one of the questions that we asked was what is the school district like? And we got a lot of bad information, but, and we got some information that was true. And we've seen how much this school district has improved over the years that we've been here. I can't be happier about where my student, my oldest son is now, he's doing well. And I'm excited about where Benjamin is going. And what I, when you say when this bond, when this resolution does pass, I think the issue that's going to be, that's going to happen is a majority of Greenberg is not in this school district. I mean, it's not in the school system. A lot of the people who are going to be voting on this referendum are, they're going to say, "I'm not going to hike up my taxes. My kids don't go to here, go here. I send them to Catholic school, I send them to private country day school, I send them to the private schools." That's where you're going to have to do some great advertising, some great information about what your new school system is going to offer the residents of this community because right now, they will not go for this. I mean, I would love to, I'll sign on the dotted line right now, I don't have a problem with that. But, but number one, but I'm not, I'm not the swing vote. The people who don't have their kids in this school system are the ones that you have to convince. And you're going to have to do a lot of convincing.
That, that came up with community meetings and we did talk a lot about that. And it was really important to Dr. Chase that this was something that the whole community could enjoy. I know there was a vision for this campus as this being a place that everybody in Greenberg would collectively gather. And I know you said that there was a recent event that you felt like, you felt that that spirit of the community all coming out for this one community event and it's, I'm not sure what it's...
Well, it was recently, our whole company.
Recently, exactly. And I think really getting the word about, out about the community spaces. I know that even if folks send their kids to private school, oftentimes their child is on a travel team that might be taking advantages of the field or they're very interested in the arts program. And we're talking about amazing state-of-the-art auditoriums, top-notch fields that they're not getting anyplace else, community rooms that everyone can enjoy, and the feeling of a place that everybody can gather. I do think it's really important that we make sure that everybody knows that it's not only for the students that are going to be in the school building. So I think that's a really great point.
I'll just add to that, neighboring districts such as Mount Vernon, New Rochelle, Portchester, Rye, they have a lot of families that opt into private schools. But those bonds pass within the last two years because the community felt that if there's a stronger school district, better facilities, better education, that the whole community would be advantaged. So there is a, you know, a strong consideration. Our job, Nicole and I, is to educate the community about the plans for the bond, what the vision is and what it might mean for the community. Not necessarily, we're not here to tell people to vote yes. However, we are here to educate what the plans are and how it might benefit the community. So I think, you know, a lot of, I have to tell you, we, in the last four or five bonds we've worked on, we have not had such a compelling story to tell, you know, from, you know, buildings that are, have, you know, have fallen into disrepair, I guess for a lot of complicated reasons. And as one integrated campus, it really is an interesting story. So, you know, there is a strong possibility from what we've seen in Westchester that many people that send their children to private school might be compelled to support this. We'll see how that goes.
I might add one item with regard to the team itself. One reason why we went to Albany was actually not to meet with the governor. It was previously perhaps stated, it was actually to meet with facilities planning. The entire state is covered by the facilities planning department to ensure that the school districts have what they need. So we have them as a team, but also the reason why we're up here is because we're bringing our experience, we're working in Mount Vernon, we're working in other districts within Westchester, within New York State to say, here's how it's possible, here are the results, here's how the bonds passed in the last few years, just like Greenberg needs. And that's one of the benefits to having a team that is local, that is, that does have the ability to address what the same issues are. Because I'm in Mount Vernon and every single day, basically assisting with their $100 million bond, plus they have the largest energy performance contract for $44 million. So all of that says, we see a need, the district has a need, the administration is backing the community, backing the students, showing the efforts to make a difference from the past, right? So to move forward, it's a very good time. That's the reason why a confidence level is there that the bond will pass.
Hi, I have two comments. One is that you spoke about the sale of Highview and LFJ. And we speak of, oh, I'm sorry, Highview and Bailey. And we speak about $20 million that would offset some of the cost. But we never speak about the fact that once these buildings are sold, it will go on the tax roll. And that money will also offset some of our taxes. So I think that's something that people need to be aware of, that that's income that will additionally reduce our taxes.
Yeah, that's a really great point.
So it's not just the 20 million, it's money that's coming in and coming in and coming in year after year. So I just wanted to say that because nobody's ever saying, you're welcome. Another point is back to traffic, sorry. You were talking about the fact that you're working with the New York State Department of Transportation and that Paco Pone and West Harstale meets the warrants for a traffic signal. Have you done additional studies there that we requested in our comments? The draft comments? Because one of the problems that we had with the draft is that you're treating it as an isolated T-section and it's not because of the offset with Keats Avenue and the fact that Maria Regina and Solomon Schechter and the rest of the other traffic that's involved there.
Yeah, we did look at that whole corridor and it's described in the final EIS and tried to answer questions individually on those issues. And part of our proposal is to try to deal with Keats Avenue and helping left turners out, coming out of Keats Avenue with a fairly simple modification that could be built into the, included in the permit application with a traffic signal. And we've discussed that with DOT and they're willing to consider it. So that's part of the proposal. And our analysis was based on the worst intersection on West Harstale Ave, which is at Home Road. So most of our study was done there, but we've looked up and down the corridor as well to try to address the comments.
Okay, thank you, because it is the worst intersection and I'm envisioning a traffic light there and never being able to get out because traffic's now stacked at the light and never being able to make the left. So as long as some accommodations will be made, I look forward to seeing what the result is. Thank you.
What DOT made us aware of was the intersection of 100A and 100B is the worst intersection in the area and they're watching that very closely to see what they can do about it.
I have a related question on the same topic. On traffic. Shall I go?
Hi there, what I wanted to say was two things, well, really five. One, Edmond is considering and they're going to court. And this is to be ordered, separating from and becoming incorporated. That's Edmond, okay? So that means our taxes here in Greenberg, all right? And I can't see them really used, all right, that's court. Number two, Auburn State, where they donated this property, a lot was taken into consideration and one of the things, and I'm glad I have good memory, is that we would have an arts building for the youth here who are extraordinarily talented. So therefore, the building that you have set aside for the arts, as far as our concern, is inadequate because we were always looking for a stage where we could have actually performing arts here, for dance, for drama, a full working studio with sound and all. That is not in here and that's one of the things. No, it's not enough. You said seats five hundred, that's good, but you don't have space there for performing arts. I mean, orchestra, the level for the orchestra, nor do you have it set up on a stage setting that you can actually do drama and you can bring in small, for the community once again. They can do, we can have our own, like...
It's like bringing in...
We do have that, it's not shown in the level, level of detail level. We're running at this point, doesn't show that scattered information.
If you remember correctly, I did not ask the question, I apologize for interrupting. I expect the same thing, all right? Thank you. The other thing was, you know, the other thing was, um, my God, I'm seeing my memory fail, didn't fail on that one. But this is all for the board anyway, so I will come back, it's late, it's 10:30, 11 o'clock. And I'm going to pass, okay? And I'll hit you on the next one.
I need, I'd like to ask you, where is the road at LeF Jackson School? Where does it come in and where does it go out? Because it's a playground over there, where is that playground going to be in your new endeavor? Yeah, my second question, let me ask you the second question while I'm doing this. If we have a red light out here, we would have to pay for that red light. Because I understand Solomon Schechter wanted a red light, they couldn't get it from the state. And now they pay a police officer to direct traffic at Solomon Schechter. So how are we going to fund a red light?
I believe there's a lot of money that you need to fund the light. Obviously, the details and the cost, the ultimate cost needs to be worked out. But it's part of, you know, it's included, it's part of the package because it's needed and it's needed for mitigation purposes.
So this is the existing road that comes in and the road will continue and then loop around the south end of the site. So this is all existing, we're just making the connection back. If you go back, maybe one spot. Yeah, so we're, the playground is right here.
And where is the road, is it in the playgrounds?
No.
There's actually like a landscape there, there's trees.
And where is the green for outback? You can come in or go outback. If it's Serra Cola Road, that's a...
Existing access stays the same location on First Street.
On Serra Cola Road?
Yes.
And it's so, it's so tight, I'm sorry for the homeowners here.
There's really no other option, there's no other location.
It's not good. You'll have that, you've got two churches right there, not including the third church on Fair Street. But it's not, you've got two, one right at Fair and Jennifer Hill and you've got the other one on Jennifer. And then you've got, and then the people taking one nineteen cutting walk coming that way to avoid the traffic over there. I still want traffic.
It's not an ideal situation, unfortunately, it's existing situation and that's the only access that is...
I don't say access, but it's not going right now.
Maybe I should ask my traffic question at this point. All right, so back in the draft of the EIS, we had a sentence that was unfortunately said, we plan to have somebody direct traffic. We don't plan anything about putting a signal in. And there were concerns from the community about even if you try to put a signal in, maybe the DOT would go for it, because they didn't go for it before. And I think we've kind of resolved most of that. I think we said, yeah, we're going for it, we're putting a signal in so things will be better to the extent that the signal will make the better corner of West Harstale Avenue and half of forever. Now, I have the advantage of having looked at the final, I know there are other problems. if you look at the system, and I'm just talking about just that intersection at this point, she's got another, another solution to kind of help a little bit with the other intersection, but wait. All right, so now, I go and look at the wonderful packet that the court has seen, that you guys in public will see soon if we vote on this thing, and instead, you know that there are levels of quality for the intersection, right? A being the best, F being the worst, A, B, C, D, E, F. So according to Table six and Appendix B attachment two, we've now made it a Packer Pond Road, it's no longer an F, it's now a D, okay? So we made it from F to D, but D is not great, okay? I had asked another question along with that in my submission, and that was that many, many years ago, there used to be another entrance off the spur of Juniper Hill Road, and, and there's a custodian who's, who's lived in a house there, and he's coming up for retirement, and he's going to be moving on, and so that part of the property is no longer blocked off, and people used to go down that road and connect directly to Woodlands, and it comes, I believe if you were to go up Fair Street and you turn right at the, there's a corner where you start going up the hill on Juniper Hill Road, instead you turn right, and it parallels the property to the golf course, and the Seventh Day Adventist Church for a while, and then you make a left and you're on that property. Now, your answer to my query about this was, we tried, we tried doing something that we thought was too expensive, but if my memory serves correctly, because I am on the C A C, what we tried doing was locating the entire school in that area of the property, and I don't think that worked out. The question in my mind is, what if we just put that road back together, add another entrance to the Warburg campus, such that we don't have, we're not limited to the number of driveways, we've got a great number of schools, would that take pressure on Packer Pond and take pressure off the Leif Jackson side and Sarah Gold's side? Would that get us above D D? And how much would it cost?
It would definitely, would not change the D, level of service, it made very, based on what we looked at, would make very little difference at that intersection, it would mostly take, what we felt was mostly take traffic from the Pine Wood access, which is a south access to the campus, and reroute it going the other direction. The other concern that we have, well, a couple of the concerns, one is that width of that end of Juniper Hill Road is, appears to be too narrow, and it would be roadway.
It'd be roadwork, yes, and a stop sign.
And then the other concern that D O T raised to us is they're concerned about traffic, adding traffic to one nineteen, which a northerly access would tend to send school traffic that way, so that just kind of opens a can of worms for one nineteen. So it kind of those combinations of things.
I suspect people coming through some of the other entrances are going to use one nineteen anyway, so I, I think that may be a wash. All right, so we don't know, you think it won't help, and you don't know how much it costs?
I don't, personally, I don't, I was.
Do we have, can we come up with an estimate for how much it would cost? Okay, thank you.
There are no further questions. Again, I thank the community for hanging around as long as you have, I really appreciate your questions. You know that you can always ask questions of the district, we have very competent consultants who have done this work in so many places. I just want to reiterate again the importance of this project, and while we, we respect everyone's opinion, keep in mind, the renderings you saw, the drawings you saw, the, the graphics that you saw, it's about our kids. Our kids deserve buildings that look like that. Our kids deserve learning spaces that look like that. You want your children in a twenty-first century learning space that looks like that. I don't know any other school district in this area that offers this type of learning environment for kids. Greenberg has always been the school district that's been the trendsetter and the trailblazer. We have the opportunity to do that again. This project did not start with me. This project was in existence well before I arrived. In fact, I'm made to understand this community spent the last twenty-some-what years talking about consolidation. Now is the time. We've created the momentum, let's drive this home for kids. Our kids deserve this, because I don't know if we'll ever get this level of opportunity in the future for our children. Just like our homes, we upkeep our homes, we make sure that our homes are safe for kids. We want to make sure our schools are safe for kids, and we want to make sure that our schools reflect modern facilities. So again, I thank you for your attention, I thank you for your time, we're going to have more conversations about this. Two civic associations have already reached out, asking us to present. We will be reaching out to other civic associations, we'll be reaching out to the Theodore Young Center, we'll be reaching out to various organizations. Again, as Nicole and Josh indicated, there will be presentations made via video, there'll be news, you're going to be inundated with information, because we want to be able to communicate with you in the modality that you are most comfortable, so that you know exactly what you're voting for. Thank you for your attention, and thank you for your support of our children.
And thank you to the staff and all the members. And just a moment here, I believe, the next item of our agenda is the superintendent's report, we have just paused for a moment. Just put all the mics on the table. While we're waiting, I'll let you cut out the downsides. Welcome to our newly appointed board member, Jeff Barnes, although he's been welcomed since five months. Thank you for volunteering this very important for writing the document for selection process. On another topic, the Westchester Department of School Board Association, W P S B supports Connecticut for a member to the school boards in Westchester County counties. Congratulations to trusty Terry Williams on an appointment for board chair records at W P S A. And now, the superintendent's report.
Oh, yes, that's him. Oh, it does.
Good evening, once again, community members, members of the board. Thank you again for indulging us for this very important presentation, and I know it's very lengthy, but I want you to know it's lengthy because it's according to us. This is what we must do for children moving forward. My presentation tonight's going to be brief, because you've heard enough from me, and a lot of the information that we have is already available on our website as well as social media. There are a couple of things I do want to share with you. Our P S A T has been moved to October twenty-fourth, and I want to make sure that that is noted for eleventh graders. Parents were under the impression that it was supposed to have been administered, I believe, today or tomorrow, but please know that it will be administered on ten twenty-fourth. Speaking of ten twenty-fourth, I want to remind our community, I want to remind our parents, that ten twenty-fourth, ladies and gentlemen, is a two-hour early dismissal for P L C opportunities, so please make sure that you plan your childcare accordingly. Once again, ten twenty-fourth is a two-hour early dismissal for our students. While I have your attention, I would like to acknowledge two groups of individuals in our school district. Today, one, I, I love a lot of things about the Greenberg Central School District, and as I shared the email to my beloved Greenberg Central School District school family today, we have a very interesting way of creating our own holidays on a calendar. Today is School Safety Personnel Day, doesn't exist anywhere else, but we find it so important to acknowledge our school's safety personnel. There's some who are here this evening, and I saw them walking around, but these are the people who are in the front line, and they keep our kids, they keep our staff and our faculty safe, they wear the armor of protection, they've got our backs, and we just want to acknowledge them. So happy School Safety Personnel Day to all of our school safety officers, our school safety aides, and our school safety monitors. We also would like to congratulate those school safety personnel, individuals who were, the word I'm looking for is getting late, who, who received promotion of positions in the most, in the recent weeks, so we want to acknowledge them, and we want to congratulate them for moving forward. In addition, as you all know, today is National Bosses Day, so all the boss ladies and boss men out there, we congratulate them, and we thank them, and we celebrate them, because leadership is hard work. Trust me, I know what I'm talking about. Leadership is hard work, and it's also a very thankless job, so we take today to thank all the bosses out there for a job well done, and for staying the course, and for really helping to steer our school district toward world-class status. I want to thank our community for coming out for Homecoming. Homecoming was exceptionally successful, the children had a fantastic time, community members had a fantastic time, and equally as important, our team won. We did extremely well, so we congratulate our football team for a job well done, but Homecoming was well attended. And so we thank the community for coming out and celebrating our valvies, we thank our board members for coming out and celebrating our valvies, and it was celebratory event, and it was, it was well worth it. I want to share with the community that on October twenty-fifth, next Thursday, seventy-five young men from our middle and high school will be participating in the first annual Lower Hudson Valley My Brothers Keeper Alliance. We are gathering close to one thousand boys from the Lower Hudson region, coming from ten different school districts, to join us at the Westchester County Center for a day of education, empowerment, and engagement. I'm one of the co-chairs of this event, and it is really a wonderful experience to watch this come to fruition, where we have school districts as far as East Rabbit Hole, Peekskill, Newburgh, New York City, Mount Vernon, Portchester, Greenberg Central School District, of course, New Rochelle, all gathering. It gives us an opportunity to really work with leaders from each one of those communities, and it has been such a rich experience. We can't wait to bring our boys together. Featured speakers are Bishop Derrick Moore, and the kids anticipate hearing from actor, comedian Mike Epps. And so we have him scheduled to come as well, and we're working with him, and our students have the opportunity, Greenberg students have the opportunity to introduce Mike Epps to their colleagues on October twenty-fifth. So let's cheer on our boys who are part of the My Brothers Keeper brand, this is one of our activities, and we look forward to hosting events like this each and every year. The boys will arrive at eight o'clock, they will stay until two, and each one of the young men will receive an autographed copy of Mike Epps' book, The Unsuccessful Bug. So we're really excited about this upcoming event. Also too, if you walked into the vestibule, and you walked into the commentary area, you saw a lot of information about anti-bullying, and working together, and peaceful environment. As you know, each week, the New York Jets feature one of our students for Stomp Out Bullying. The high school has been very focused on Stomp Out Bullying Month, and you see postings around the building. As you, many of you know, the Power of Peace Assembly starts next week for our middle and high school students, so I'm proud of the work that they're doing to maintain the peace here at Woodlands Middle High School. It's a great place to learn, and it's a great place to teach. I thank you, community members, for your attention, I will no longer indulge you, have a great evening, and thank you for your continued support.
Thank you, Dr. Chase.
You're welcome, Mr. Moore.
And now we move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? The next meeting of the Committee Engagement Committee is on Monday, ten twenty-two, at seven P M. at Hy-Vee, all are welcome. Moving on to approvals. Do I hear a motion to approve the instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So hold.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Non-instructural personnel items, do I hear a motion to approve the non-instructural personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So hold.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Board action items, do I hear a motion to approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So hold.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions?
Abstentions.
Motion carries? Finance items, do I hear a motion to approve the finance items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So hold.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries?
Curs.
Business items, do I hear a motion to approve the business items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So hold.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries? Student services items.
So hold.
Do I hear a motion to approve the student services items presented to the board for approval this evening?
So hold.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? New business? Do I hear, does any more member of you have any new business that you wish to discuss? Yes, Tracy?
I'd like us to look at our technical policy, I think there's some ambiguity in it. At some point, we all do it tonight, but at some point, we should come back and look at it, I did find to be a minority, and maybe we also need to include language that, if any ambiguity arises, even after we review it, that it's up to the individual building administration or district administration to make some final decision.
Okay, could you refine the policy to your group's, send an email to Ivy, we'll have her edit for the list, or a heads word sort, and you discuss that policy.
Yes, I will give you the policy number, Ivy.
Okay. Or you can send her an email, one way or the other, because we'll be able to determine whether the next works out.
Okay.
Any other new business? All right, as in the previous meeting we had during the evening, okay?
Excuse me, this is.
Go ahead, Cora.
No, give her a mic, please.
Okay, now you can hear.
Go ahead.
All I want to do is to have some time to go over the school safety information that we got in our packet, of course, here's a couple of things that are left out that I think should be in here.
Okay, can we look at the Friday packet, or?
So what I'm going to do, you have it there?
Yes, I have it.
No, you all have it as a print copy?
Yes.
I'm going to give it to you electronically, too, on Friday, and then at our work session, you can gather your questions and your comments, and we can make changes as appropriate.
But, but will it be the same as this?
Same, exactly.
Okay.
Only thing I am going to change is that there are two pages where the column should be reversed, but the verbage will stay the same.
Okay, because I want to look at, you know, I want to go into my electronic thing, so I.
You have it, you have print, so don't worry about that.
Okay.
So for instance, like where it says monitors, where it says safety and security officers, where it says examples of work and job requirements, that should be reversed.
Yes.
So I'm just going to change that.
Yes.
But other than that, all the words will stay the same.
Okay, the only thing I really have is the, the grid here, and it doesn't say who the safety coordinator is responsible for, so I think we need to add that.
So we can, you just let us know exactly what you need to be enhanced, once you let us know, we'll make those changes for you all.
And David, new policy number seventy-one ten?
Seventy-one ten.
Yes. Seventy-one one ten.
Ivy, make a note. And who is?
I don't know if this is worth a business, but I'd like to.
Exactly.
I'll use, I'll use.
Come on, please.
Your request. Court. To have the.
You know.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A pause, clear for session. Now, you know. Any other new business? All right, as previously agreed, without the lack of due closing session, by a pair of motions, we want a closing session to discuss the history of. Yeah. History of the people who are persons. Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Clear for session.